Good morning. I'm Carlos Fernandez, policy analyst at Vegas Chamber. I'd like to thank you all for tuning into our conversation with Las Vegas City Council members Olivia Diaz and Brian Knutson with the Vegas Chamber President and CEO Mary Beth Sewald. Before we get started, I want to take a moment and explain some features of this call. In order to preserve high sound quality, we will be giving everyone on the call besides our presenter, Smith, for everyone to hear. If you'd like to ask any questions, there are a few ways you can do so. If you're joining this call on the web or through the mobile app, you can ask a question by using the chat feature on the interface. We'll ask your question on your behalf. You can also ask your question by clicking the hand raised button on the interface. We'll call your name and unmute your line so that you can ask your question. Once you have asked your question, we'll read your line so that everyone on the call can hear the answer. In order to preserve time, we ask that you please keep questions brief and we'll be taking all questions at the end of the call. And now, please welcome Vegas Chamber President and CEO Mary Beth Sewald, who will introduce our speakers.
Thank you, Carlos, and good morning, everybody. I want to welcome everyone to the call today, the teleconference with two members of the Las Vegas City Council, Councilwoman Olivia Diaz and Councilman Brian Knutson. In just a couple of minutes, we're going to hear from them about updates and important updates on coronavirus issues that are impacting businesses, of course, here in Southern Nevada and Las Vegas. But I really want to reinforce that the city councilors today are interested in hearing your ideas. They really want to know what you need, and they want to hear from you and understand what our businesses and the entire community need. So, we really encourage everyone to chime in with your questions and also to chime in with any needs that you have as well. The Vegas Chamber is proud and honored to be part of the Governor's Response Relief and Recovery Task Force, and in that, we're working with businesses and nonprofits and state associations all over the entire state under the leadership of Governor Sislak and then also Jim Murren, as we're coordinating these efforts to respond to the healthcare situation. And then, of course, plans for economic recovery. That's really what we at the Vegas Chamber are starting to pivot and to turn our attention to economic recovery, which that's been a primary point of focus for us from day one. But now, we're starting to work to put some plans together. So, we appreciate the business community for doing your part in working remotely and being innovative, and of course, supporting everyone in the entire community. So with that, we'll get right to the point here, and now it is my pleasure to introduce Las Vegas City Council members, Councilwoman Olivia Diaz of Ward 3 and Councilman Brian Knutson of Ward 1. Both are here to listen to you, our members, regarding the questions or concerns that you have, and of course, especially the struggles that you are facing. So while we collect questions, I'm going to turn it over to Councilor Brian Knutson and Olivia Diaz. Thank you, guys, both, for joining us today.
Good morning to everyone. This is Councilwoman Olivia Diaz. Thank you for that kind introduction, Mary Beth. My colleague and I have been receiving all kinds of calls, and first and foremost, we just want to tell everyone who's tuning into this webinar that we're with you. We know we're hurting right now, especially small businesses are hurting, but I think that what's important and not to lose sight of is that we need to stay healthy, and we need to stay well, and we need to care for our community and our family members. And so I think that as long as we stay focused and together, we will come out of this stronger because our temper has been tried before, or our resiliency has been tried before, and I'm very certain that we'll be able to be off to better times. In the current week, since the Governor announced the closure of nonessential businesses, I know the Councilman Knutson and I have been receiving some calls from small business owners in our wards, being a little confused about if they fall in a gray area, if they can continue to operate. And so, we are directing folks that have very specific questions about that to contact our business license department. They are the ones that can help people troubleshoot and kind of think about, and based on the information they're receiving from Metro, they can kind of help the business owners figure out where they may be. So I wanted to make sure that the folks that are listening, if they're kind of uncertain and they think they may fall in a gray area, that I highly encourage them to reach out to our business licensing division for the city of Las Vegas. And Robert, can you confirm their phone number?
Yes, so licensing can be reached, excuse me, business licensing can be reached at (702) 6301. That's our main department number, and just ask to speak with our licensing division, and we will transfer you to the full operator there. Or they can email licensed@lasveganevada.gov, and that will also get in. And we have people who are working from home, checking email, checking voicemails, and getting back to people as possible.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that phone number one more time, please, the phone number? Thank you.
Absolutely. The phone number is (702) 229-6301. That's the main Department of Planning number, and then from there, we will get you into the licensing division with the operators we have available.
And thank you all for joining us. This is Brian Knutson, the Councilman for Ward 1. I'm happy to be on the call today. We made the request of the Chamber to participate with them in support of the Chamber because I know there's going to be a lot of questions, a lot of challenges coming up, and we want to be as proactive as possible. So I wanted to spend just a couple of minutes talking about some of the proactive steps the city is taking right now with regards to our relationship with business. And I'm hopeful that those on the line will have observations, comments, ideas, suggestions, thoughts about ways that we can work towards a healthier future in the city of Las Vegas. So if you have imagination or creativity, now is the time to use it. There is no playbook for this, and I am open to suggestions, as is the city, and I know Councilwoman Diaz is as well. But I wanted to take a couple of minutes and talk about some of the proactive steps the city is actively working on right now. So with regards to our downtown core, we're increasing our security presence through the use of our Marshals. We are working on a reimbursement program for businesses that have to board up, programs that are businesses that are boarding up their windows, trying to get them reimbursed for that extra step to keep this community safe. From a business license perspective, we're working on a 60-day grace period for business license renewals, an option to close general or privileged licenses at no cost to reinstate them, a liquor license option to pay a reduced fee during the temporary closure, a gaming license option to pay a reduced fee during the temporary closure, and ongoing acceptance of applications during this time. And any land use applications or requests will be stayed basically during this time of crisis. So those are some of the more active steps that the city is taking to ensure that when business does come back, it can rebound in a healthy manner. I also want to say, I know there's a lot of small business owners that are angry, as is the rest of the world right now. And so if you need someone to talk to, feel free to give me a call because I've had lots of people call and express their feelings of frustration. I'm happy to talk through that. And again, kind of reframe the conversation around what do we do when we come out of this health crisis, and how do we rebound the Las Vegas economy as quickly as we possibly can? So with that, I'm really hopeful to hear some of your suggestions on how we can be better. And Mary Beth, I'll turn it over to you. I hope there's some suggestions, some thoughts, and if there are questions, we have some amazing staff here in the building with us that can help answer some of those questions.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. I think we have a question from Kathy at the Hydrant Club. Carlos, are we able to get Kathy on?
Kathy's now unmuted.
Excellent, thank you. Hi, everyone. Kathy Brooks from the Hydrant Club down at 9th and Fremont here. And first, Councilman Knutson, Councilwoman Diaz, huge gratitude to both of you. Having leaders like you at a time like this is crucial. And Mary Beth, I'll say this, I emailed this to you the other day, the Vegas Chamber is a lifeline for businesses, you know, such as myself in this time. So thank you again to all of you for that. So I'd like to know, so I'm a small business. I was lucky to be designated actually as an essential business. We are providing services to people who are providing essential services. So we are in operation. We also have a pet retail store. How can we as small businesses also help the community? Yes, I'm worried about my business surviving. I'm also worried about my fellow small businesses surviving. Is there a way, if we have services or resources, is there a way that we can communicate this either to the Chamber or perhaps Councilwoman Diaz to your office or Councilman Knutson's office so that it can be spread more widely, so that people can know what resources might be available among ourselves, not just from the government down, but perhaps across horizontally within the community?
I think Kathy, you're making a very valid point. There are people that continue to come to work every day. I think there are small businesses that are still continuing to open and do pickup and curbside delivery to folks, and I think that it is important for us to know who is still continuing to operate and run their business so that if there's some of us that are still working and feel comfortable with delivery and pickup services, that we can easily know that information so that we can help put it out there for those to, again, responsibly abide by the protocols. I guess what we're a little bit concerned about is making sure that there's not overabundance of people in certain establishments, and all of a sudden, you go from having a trickle to having too many in one location. I think that's the balance we're trying to navigate and ensure that people understand that we really do need to make sure that if we're doing curbside, no one gets out of their car, and they really wait for their goods and their vehicle, just to make sure that we're doing our best to keep people's health and safety at the forefront of our minds. But I don't know, Councilman Knutson, if you have any comments?
You know, Kathy, and for anyone on the line, I think we're open for suggestions. I don't think there's, like I said, there's no playbook for doing this. If your business is open, we need to find a way to market it because your business is staying open is good for everybody in Las Vegas. So if you have ideas on how we promote or support local businesses in the way that's supportive of the Governor's directive, then send them our way. And I think the Councilman and I will do everything we can to figure out how we leverage the city in promoting the use or the application of small businesses throughout the city.
I actually do have a bunch of ideas. I will go ahead and put those together in a document and get those out to both of you sometime today.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, also, we've created a restaurant list on the Chamber's website that might be of help as well. So the next question is, I am the owner of a video production company in town. I lost 90% of my contracts for 2020, and right now, I can't work on getting more contracts since all of my customers, resorts, music labels, conventions, are unsure about the future like we all are. I work mostly with self-employed artists and production assistants. Does the city have some plans to help the self-employed?
I think the city is going to struggle right now. I think the federal aid package that just got passed, I think at 1:00 in the morning through the Senate last night, is the best option to look towards. We have a team of people in our Economic and Urban Development and our Government Affairs Department that are working on identifying how that's going to apply to Nevada in general, to Las Vegas, and then how we spread the word about those federal funds that are available for small businesses, large businesses, and government agencies. I think based on the initial read of the bill, there definitely is money coming into Nevada. Las Vegas and Nevada will be eligible for federal funds. And then we're going to have to look at some of those small business administration loans and how they apply to businesses in Las Vegas. And our team is going to be focused on how we get that word out to every business owner in the Valley.
Mary Beth, I do think that the federal funds that will be made available, I hope, soon, we know we still have to get the Congress's approval of what the Senate just approved, the $2 trillion package of relief. But I was on a call with the state senators, Catherine Cortez Masto and Jackie Rosen, yesterday, and they did say that independent contractor folks would be included in filing for unemployment and also receiving this relief. So I highly recommend that folks that know that in the past, they couldn't file for certain things, really take an exhaustive look at new things, because this is a new day and a different time, and things are being played a little bit differently. So I highly encourage them to look into all kinds of financial relief available to unemployed and hopefully people that will receive some funds based on this relief package.
Okay, we're going to unmute a couple of folks' lines. We've got a lot of questions coming in, and while Carlos is unmuting, the line of David Lidner, I'm going to put this out there, offering help. This is Sean at Starfire Web Design. We could build a website that is a directory for businesses that are open. We can have it be a directory with information on each business so it can be distributed. This could be done in about three to four days. So Sean, we should be in contact with you. That's an interesting idea. In the meantime, Carlos, are you ready with David?
Yeah, David, your line is now unmuted. You can go ahead and offer your suggestion.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you. Excellent, thank you. So I just wanted to share that I happen to be based here in Las Vegas since 1996, living in Johnus Park this whole time. So I am, I happen to be the CEO of GiftLocal.com, and we are the gift card partner for thousands of local businesses around the country. And in the last week, we've been getting a lot of help from local chambers and news in LA and New York, and I have failed to be able to help my own community as much here. So I wanted to share with you that we have more employees here than anywhere else in the country, and as a Las Vegas-based company, we are in position to help local businesses start selling gift cards from their website and their social media pages today. Anyone who signs up today, we could have them live tomorrow, and that we have put out there that we're waiving all fees to get these businesses onboarded, which is, you know, hundreds or thousands of dollars usually that we charge in licensing fees. And so what that's doing for these local businesses is it drives them online revenue now, revenue and working capital that they can use now while they're closed. And then when they reopen, the consumers have that gift card they can use when they reopen, which is also driving them butts in seats, you know, people back in their door, which is going to be the second half of this problem when we come out of this. And so I just wanted to share that we have webinars up on LinkedIn, we have collateral, and we have a team in place to help all these local businesses generate an online revenue stream with zero labor, zero risk, zero cost, that is getting them, you know, working capital now, which, you know, is some amount of way to help them get through this and also help them when they reopen.
That's actually pretty awesome, David. Is there a phone number or a website you want to mention for folks who are interested or may want to follow up?
Absolutely. They can go to GiftLocal.com, which redirects to a consumer-facing brand called It's On Me. It's On Me is pretty well-known locally here in Vegas. It's the gift card partner for local favorites from Carson Kitchen and Esther's and Makers and Finders to, you know, Lotus and Siam and La Straga and businesses all around Las Vegas. So we have a pretty good footprint here already, but there are clearly hundreds, if not thousands of other local businesses that we can deliver a solution to right now that would be creating revenue for them daily that aren't onboard. And the fact that we're waiving all fees and have our team here based in Las Vegas really allows us to help this community more than probably any other community in the city, in the country.
Okay, great, David. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you very much. We have a lot of questions to get to here. Next, we're going to unmute the line of Mario Enriquez. If you're ready, Mario?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I guess my points are kind of threefold here, and I'm speaking directly with regards to my business, which is Garage East Wine Room and Merchant in the Arts District. One, you mentioned, Councilman Knutson, you mentioned coming up with imaginative ways of maintaining operations and increasing our revenues during these closures and during this time. One that is always bandied about is delivery. However, for a small business like ours, we are currently prevented from offering delivery, whereas large business grocery stores are able to offer delivery. I'm speaking directly about the delivery of alcohol. Grocery stores are able to deliver up to 99 units of a single alcoholic beverage to a private residence, whereas smaller businesses without a footprint of a grocery store are not. I just want to know if that is on the radar of the city council and how that could be issued or addressed in the future. So that maybe in situations that come up like this, we are then able to supplement our revenues by adopting, you know, an emergency allowance for delivery of alcohol if it's a specialty license or something like that. Two, we have asked, as a lot of have, for stays of rent from our landlord, who is based in California. However, currently, it doesn't seem like they're willing to provide that for us. I was wondering if there was perhaps a, or a means of having city council backing or city backing in an official letter posted on a website or something that maybe small businesses could then present to their landlords as an official letter from the city or the jurisdiction to aid in asking for stays of rent through this, over the next couple of months? And three, addresses kind of security in the downtown area. We're in the Arts District and already just driving around a couple of times late at night, and during the day, I've seen graffiti go up. We've already had a break-in in the Arts District, and I just want to know how the city council or the city or the downtown area command is addressing security in the area, whether it's increased police patrols or if recommended that, you know, individual neighborhoods kind of get together and provide, like, watch groups in shifts throughout the, or something like that. But it is an issue. I think the longer that this goes on, it's just going to continue to be an issue in our places of business. And that's it.
Yeah, so real quickly, we're, as a team, trying to figure out how best to answer three different questions. First question, it's now on the council's radar about being able to deliver alcohol, and we have Robert here who can talk briefly about that. Second question, talking about rent, and we have rent abatements for landlords, so we have someone who can talk about that. And then Councilwoman Diaz is going to talk about public safety in the downtown and the Arts District in particular. So we briefed our answers. We have more questions, too.
All right, so just for those of you who are on the line, my name is Robert Field. I'm the Director of Planning, which includes the licensing division. So yes, that delivery question is on our radar. That is something we've been working on internally for a while as a part of an effort that the council endorsed with a recent approval to begin looking at revising our alcohol licenses and alcohol regulations. That is one of the things that was on the table for discussion. However, right now, we do not have a mechanism to allow alcohol delivery to homes, but it is definitely on the radar. It is something we're looking at, and we're trying to figure out how to do that beyond, as the caller mentioned, grocery stores that meet a certain size requirement do have that capacity, but right now, we do not have authorization to do that below that. As this continues, that is definitely one of the things that's on our radar, on the licensing piece of getting services to be able to be delivered at home. So it's on the radar. I do not have a definitive answer on that, but it is something we're looking at.
So now that it's on the council's radar, we can reach out to you individually, especially Councilwoman Diaz and Sharon Herr Ward, and see if we can get a timeframe for you.
So with respect to the question from the tenant position, this is Tara Anderson. I'm in development, yeah, in the Office of Economic and Urban Development. We got to say six feet apart? No, it's easy. With respect to the tenant position on any rent obligations to your landlord, what I'd encourage you to do is revisit the terms of your lease. It's typically standard operating procedure in lease terms to be inclusive of force majeure clauses and/or unexpected or unavoidable delays. There's usually some ambiguous language there that really is a catch-all to basically say, you know, act of God, really. And so, but you'd want to intimately comb through your lease. If in fact you do have language in your lease that speaks to that, I would encourage you to have an attorney or your attorney friend write a letter to your landlord notifying and speaking to the terms of that lease. That puts, that papers that clause and will protect you. There are limitations, again, the life cycle of being able to exercise the force majeure clause, but at least in the interim, it should allow you some relief and justification and legal standing with your landlord.
All right, and Mario, to your public safety point, I have been in communication with small business owners in the Arts District 18B. I know Josh Molina from Makers and Finders reached out to me the latter part of last week, and immediately upon receiving his call, I called both the captain at DTAC, Captain Patricia Spencer, and I also called Tim Hacker from our city marshals, and I made them aware that that area of the city needed to be in constant control. Now, I'm not going to lie, our public safety first responders are strapped. They are trying to do their best with the manpower that they have, and they are trying to tend to violent emergency calls. They go to the top of the line. And so while I did get their words that they were going to bump up the patrol units in the Arts District during this time, they did say, at least the captain from Metro advised that it would be something to consider, the option of maybe hiring a security guard during non-operational hours when things are a little bit more quiet, and to see how many of the business owners could pitch in and mitigate that cost so that there could be security surveillance 24/7. I don't know. I'm going to ask for a follow-up from Director Hacker about how the surveillance is going, but I just ask that you guys keep me in the loop because you guys are the eyes and the ears right there, and so I don't know personally what you guys are encountering, but as soon as things are happening, let me know, and I'll move quickly to get some answers and some updates.
Hey, Mario, I might be able to add to that. This is Ryan Smith, Business Development Manager for the city. I think, too, as we roll out the program reimbursing up to $2,000 for the securing of your building, maybe those funds could be used to potentially hire that private security and get somebody around the clock. So we plan to roll that out by the end of the week, and hopefully that puts a little bit of money back in your specific group's pocket to distribute things like.
Okay, very good. If we could go to some more questions, or unless any of you has anything else?
We're good, Mary Beth.
Okay, great. We've gotten a lot of questions about independent contractors. How can they get help?
I believe right now, the best way to look at it is to look at unemployment. If they're going to be out of work, I know there's challenges with the state system keeping up with the demand, but I think it's going to be immediately, relief is going to be through the unemployment and making yourself available for the state and federal resources that are going to come your way. And then be on the lookout for changing skill sets because I think our economy is going to require some different skill sets over the next couple of years, is my guess. And I wish I had a better answer. It's going to be tough.
This question is along those lines, what financial resources are available to small businesses, solopreneurs who are forced to close to be able to cover their cash flow, rent, utilities, et cetera, that landlords can steer their tenants towards? For example, the city of Los Angeles is offering no interest in microloans of $5,000 to $20,000. Is something like this being considered in Las Vegas?
So this is Ryan again. So obviously, we want to encourage small businesses to go through the SBA Disaster Loan Program. With basically one signature, you can get up to $25,000. There's no payments for 12 months on those leases, or on those loans, and they're available for 30 years, so it's a really minimal monthly cost on the payback. And then I can just tell you that the RDA, which is the redevelopment agency for the city, we're looking at everything that we can possibly do in a very short period of time to potentially help companies, and that was how we birthed the reimbursements on securing the buildings, since we know a lot of groups already incurred that cost. So as the Councilwoman and Councilman Knutson said, if there's any other suggestions that you guys have, we're definitely open to taking a look at them.
Okay, so here's a clarifying question. I think Council- I think Councilwoman Knutson may have just said that business owners who are independent contractors, to clarify, they can apply for unemployment?
Um, Mary Beth, I said that, Councilwoman Diaz. And that was what I heard from our Nevada senators. They basically said that's why they had kind of delayed the passage of this third package. And they were really advocating to make sure that all workers were encompassed coming out of, of this relief effort from the federal level. And so that was what they told me through a conference call yesterday. And that's what my, also my economic and urban development team is shaking their heads yes, that they've also heard the same information to be factual. But I'll confirm again with them. And then I'll make sure that I get the information to you. And I just don't want to give misinformation. But we'll, we'll verify again and then send it your way to the chamber. And then we can post.
Okay, excellent. Thank you for clarifying. This next question is from John Guidry of Bank of Nevada. He's also a board trustee at the Vegas Chamber. Since the construction industry is still building, is the city inspecting and allowing projects to proceed?
Yes, so this is Robert again. So yes, so our direction from our city council and our city managers team is that all the development activity is continuing. So our Development Services Center is still fully operational. We have folks accepting business licenses. We are taking an entitlement application, building permits. We are doing reviews of permits that are in the system. And then our Building and Safety Unit is doing inspections on those construction projects. So we are, we are running, we're doing things a little differently. We're doing some video inspections. So there's some things that our inspectors aren't physically looking at themselves, but they're looking at via, people are videoing it with their phones. We're being very creative in how we make sure that that, that sector of our industry is able to continue working forward. So any of your, any of your members or anyone on the line who needs to work on a business license, our licensing folks are working. Some of them are working from home, some of them are in the office. But we are working through all of those development aspects of the city's business, are continuing to operate.
Okay, very good. We have Raymond Russo on the line. Raymond, are you there?
You know, I've been listening to everyone's comments. We're all looking for solutions and that's great. We, we have to, we are where we are, unfortunately. My, I like to push back a little bit, though, on why we're here in the first place. Because I've never seen a greater overreach or overreaction by the government at every level in my entire life. As I look at my own research and statistics, I see in the United States, the death rate on the, on this coronavirus is less than 1%. In Germany, it's less than a half a percent. And, you know, they're using something, ozone therapy to cure diseases like viruses of oxygen kills viruses. So I'm wondering, why are we so crazy about this thing that we're shutting down our entire economies, putting these people at risk, these, these business owners that are looking for solutions on how to survive when this appears to be no worse than the regular flu? So can somebody answer that question for me?
Yeah, I just, I sit on the Board of Health as well. I don't think the, the Health District would consider this a normal flu. And I think as a city, our, our role, our responsibility and to our charter is to be responsive to the state of Nevada through the, the governor's office and the legislature. And we have some obligation to respond to the President of the United States as well. So I don't think there's anything that this city could have done to prevent this current pandemic or the, the response to it with the economic conditions. I think the, the president was very clear in establishing guidelines. The governor has made very clear his directive. And the city has followed suit, whether we agree or disagree around the, the science of the pandemic. I'm not sure if it matters. We won't be able to influence it either way. Right now, I think we're entirely focused on how we can make it through this health scare that, that has been established and then start focusing on the economic recovery.
Okay, thank you very much. We have another question here. What do we do if we have current employees? With one of our active contracts, we are on a three-month billing cycle and we still have employees we need to pay. Should we have those employees apply for unemployment?
I mean, I, I would recommend that that's a business decision. I don't know that the city's recommendation is probably more interested in that.
So if you, if you couldn't hear on the line, that was Tara Anderson. I think we're all open for phone calls if anyone wants to talk to us. But that wouldn't be a city's position or decision to make. It would be the individual business owner's decision to make on what's in the best interest of their business.
Okay, on that note, thank you, guys, for offering to, to speak to folks directly. Is there contact information you can share right now with the folks on this call?
Yeah, so I'll give out my, my cell phone number at 702-493-1547. If you want to talk to other members of the city council, it's 702-229-6405.
And Mary Beth, I'll go ahead and give my cell phone number. It's 702-764-1093. And they could also shoot me an email via odias@lasvegasnevada.gov. Because I know sometimes people can get their thoughts down in an email. And so whatever their avenue, we're here. In text is good, too, whatever, whatever mode they want to communicate. I've been receiving a lot of messages via Facebook as well. So on Facebook and social media, I'm Olivia Diaz LV. That's Insta, Facebook and Twitter.
And then if I could, I just want to update on the phone number for business license. So the direct number to reach business license with any licensing-related questions is going to be 702-229-6281. So that will get you directly to our licensing folks so you don't have to go through our operator. So again, for licensing, it's going to be 702-229-6281.
Thank you for that updated business licensing number, Robert. And Mary Beth, I wanted to get to that last question about payroll, three months. Tara just leaned over. I know we didn't keep social distancing protocol in check, but wanted to let that person know that SBA loans can go towards their payroll so that the SBA loan structure does accommodate for small businesses utilizing it for this purpose. And again, just like Ryan mentioned earlier, they can just sign for $25,000. There's no interest, no payments due for a year. That would be an option that's on the table for them.
Yeah, this is Ryan, yeah. There is, there is one, there is interest on those loans. So subject a maximum of 4%. So they're, they're low-interest loans, again, not, no payments for 12 months, over 30 years. And then the other thing, there is, there was a disaster relief bill that was passed that allows for the federal government to reimburse two weeks of sick pay for employees or leave. And so we have that information on our website as well. So you could go there and figure out how to apply for that.
Okay, very good. We have another caller, Eric Pretto on the line. Eric, are you there? Okay, I think Eric got disconnected. Another question is, we have branches remaining open. We felt it was important that we do. To protect our customers and our employees, we've put up physical barriers and signage, asking customers to keep a safe distance. Have you discussed ways to open non-essential businesses if they can maintain physical distance and reduce the spread? Since it will take time for the sawing as people get back to business, I think it would be important to at least get some business going again with guidelines.
I, I can answer, and then Robert from the Supplying Department, they jump in. But I think right now, we have to follow the governor's directive. If the governor decides to change his directive, I, I assume that the, the city and other jurisdictions will fall in line with how the governor changes his directive. As of right now, it's, it's been very clear about the closure of non-essential businesses.
Yeah, so I would just add to that, this is Robert. So exactly what the councilman said, the governor's directive is what it is. Until he lists that, those non-essential businesses will have to remain closed. However, one of the things that we're doing is we are inventorying, we are seeing a lot of what you just described, creative ways to maintain that safe distance and still operate, protect employees from any potential contagions and what have you. So we're inventorying some of those. So again, just like with the, what the council people said, you can share with us the things that you're doing. As these conversations are based on when things can reopen, we want to make sure that people are aware of some of these other measures that folks have been taking that may help provide some feeling of assurance for both employees as well as customers that businesses can take in the future once, once things begin to loosen back up.
Okay, very good. Before we take our next caller, someone made a suggestion. When we do reopen, can we do a grand reopening celebration on Main Street and the Arts District? I think that's a great idea.
I love that idea. I'll be the first in line.
I know. Okay, having said that, I thought I'd just throw that in there. Next on the line with a live question is Carol Bott. Carol, are you there?
Yes, I am. Hello?
Hi.
Hello, go ahead with your question, Carol.
Okay, the question that I sent in, my name's Carol Bott from Monaco, and I'm the owner of a salon, like many other salons in Las Vegas. I am located in Summerlin. I am a new business that opened last October. I've had several salons in California. So what my goal in life right now was, when I opened the salon, was to be able to mentor lots of new styles and bringing people up in the business. My question is, one of the things that I want to help them, assist them with is figuring out what their options are as far as filing for unemployment and the SBA assistance. Some of them are independent contractors and some of them are commissioned. They're both different kind of venues. So how are these people, and how are these people needing to document their jobs? And how long would they need to have been working? Especially for graduating students that are just coming out of school.
Carol, I think that, that might be a longer answer that we may not be the best to answer or provide a response. So what I'm going to ask is if you want to give me a call personally, then I can try and find someone within the Department of Employment, Training and Rehabilitation that will probably connect you to the resources that would be available for, for that group of employees. So I'll give you my number at 702-493-1547. And then I'll connect with you offline and see if we can get you support from the Department of Employment, Training and Rehabilitation.
Great, and what's your name?
Brian Knutson.
Brian Knutson, okay, that's great. Well, I think there'll be a lot of salon owners that this could help. So if you can get that to me, I'll do my best to connect with them so that we can help our own industry survive this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, very good. I just wanted to make a clarification, too, as we're talking or collecting information. Just to clarify, there were a lot of questions about sole proprietors and independent contractors. The current SBA affiliation rules include sole proprietors, independent contractors and other self-employed individuals as eligible for loans. So I just wanted to make sure that we get that clarifying information out there because we've gotten so many questions. Okay, a couple more, if we could. Yes, go ahead.
No, I just said, thank you for that information and clarification. I think it's really important.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much. We have another caller on the line. Rebecca is on the line. Are you there?
Rebecca, your line is unmuted. You can go ahead and ask your question. Just make sure you unmute your personal telephone.
Okay, we're having a little trouble with Rebecca. Let's go to Danielle Crouch. Danielle?
Yes, okay. Hi.
Hi.
Hi, Danielle.
Hey, so I have a few questions, kind of like Mario. My first one, I mean, I'm, I'm hearing a lot of answers that are kind of like, I know you guys want to help, but some of them are just sounding like, well, you're on your own, hire a lawyer or hire security. And that's, that's a little bit tough to hear because we've been following closely, my partner and I, things that are happening in other cities and states. And we've been following since the beginning. And they're managing to make these things happen. One of them being, you know, the delivery of alcohol. There's a lot of very easily searchable mandates where there's some adjustments to the laws and how they're temporary and here's how they work. And I'm just confused as to why we're just getting an answer that says on the radar when there are examples of other cities that are executing things faster. And I would, I would assume that everyone agrees that time is of the essence on this stuff. Especially because so many of us, small businesses, I mean, we can't just wait, you know, months for things to happen. We can't rely on reimbursements of things because that would, that would assume that there's a hefty amount of cash flow already in the bank accounts. And all these small businesses really rely on the sales day-to-day. So I guess, that being said, I have three questions that I wrote down. The first one is, there's all this here, the hearsay that, and I don't know if it's true, about evictions coming to a halt. If somebody could clarify what the, if, if that's accurate? And also, are there be, any laws being passed to stop late fees and recovery once the pandemic passes? So in other words, what are, what are our protections right now? Especially if we happen to be in the camp that has a predatory landlord that would definitely like to take the building back? That's my first one. I, would you like me to say all three questions? Or do you want me to stop there?
Let's do all three.
Okay, second question. Will there be relief on unemployment insurance and payroll taxes after this? Because we're all expecting to see some hefty increases in that after we've told every employee we have to go ahead and apply. And the third question is, will the city or state be hiring? For example, most of my employees can't get through. They're waiting on hold for 10 and a half hours to the unemployment office. And that's tough. I'm pretty sure everybody in the hospitality industry is having the same issue. So could we kill two birds with one stone, so to speak? Could your offices hire help, temporary help with people, displaced workers that could help with the unemployment office to get those wait times down? Or hire security if, you know, if the marshals and all that are spending more of their time on violent crime? Could you hire people to, you know, work the neighborhoods and keep an eye on stuff? That would be my third question.
People have guard cards.
So I can, I can start, and then I'll ask for a little bit of help. So first, on your comments around we're not being as responsive about other cities, I hear you loud and clear. I'm all supportive of delivering alcohol. So the faster we can move a discussion around that, I'm, I'm happy to push that through. If there are other examples you have from other cities around the country, we're also researching them. As fast as we can move, we will move them through if they're right for our city. The second question around landlords, it's a, it's a legal issue between the landlord and the leasing. I think I'm going to refer back to Tara, who made the comment that it really does depend on what's in your lease. The city won't be able to supersede what you've already agreed to within your lease. But everyone is in a precarious situation. So I'll let Tara jump in on that one.
No, I mean, this reverts back to really being intimately familiar with the terms of your lease. And if there are clauses around force majeure of instances like this that you could exercise, my comment previously about inviting an attorney to write a letter speaking to those terms on your behalf, you could certainly author it yourself. You don't need to outsource. But being, that's first and foremost. The second is, I think one of the things that is advantageous is this is not a, a microcosm that we as a market are solely experiencing and that by and large landlords, whom would they replace you as a tenant with? So there's not a lot of incentive when we've got a bit of a stalemate in the market. While that's the upside, that they're not, they're less likely to be, you know, looking to oust businesses. But we also unfortunately can't protect against really aggressive, bad-actor landlords. I mean, if a landlord has it within their legal rights to pursue evictions outside of legislative changes, that's something where I think it would behoove all respective tenants to be well-versed and poised to understand what their legal rights are under these circumstances and refer to their, refer to their lease as it relates to force majeure.
I, I think you might have answered the question right there, though, outside of legislative changes. So are there any legislative changes that can happen where, you know, if this were to become a court, a legal battle with a court, where the, a judge... were to become a court, a legal battle with a court, where the, a judge could cite, you know, some code that has to do with this pandemic, which is something, like you said, it's a new playbook. So is there, is there something that's happening from the city's side, the judicial side, to give protection against? And I think the first question about evictions is wondering if that's actually true, if evictions have come to a halt. And then is there anybody working on language that can, can be put into a legislative change to add protections to anybody affected during this time, this state of emergency, so to speak?
Well, I think your question is incredibly valid, especially if this pandemic persists. I don't, in real time at this moment, have an acute understanding of what that mechanism or path forward would be, but happy to look into what is the how to, and what is the swiftest measures that we could take legally, whether it's municipal code legislatively, et cetera, to understand what's both nimble if this becomes a, a, a persisting and prolonged problem that puts undue duress on, on tenants. But at, at the moment, I don't find you as a-
Yeah, the only other thing I'll add is, from a government perspective today, I get the point about, you know, can we work through legislation not allowing for landlords to have predatory practices or evict tenants in a, in a private contract situation. I will let you know that the government, and that's why you're probably hearing, oh, there's this stay on eviction, because the federal government through HUD and other sources have stopped eviction temporarily, residential eviction. So, I mean, that's where you could be hearing that. They're stopping that in a lot of situations. But on the private side, between a, a, a contract between a, two private entities is a different story.
And Danielle, I just want to say that I'm hearing that an imminent special session at the state level may be convened. I don't know. I don't have a crystal ball. But I'm hearing that if there's federal funds for the state to then have to appropriate statewide, then the legislature will probably convene. And I would also advise you to reach out to your assembly members and state senators so that they're apprised of these circumstances. And usually, if the state speaks to it legislatively, then usually local entities have to comply with what state statute says in regards to evictions and all of this area of law. So I would also highly recommend you reach out to your state elected.
And then your final question that, that I heard was, can we use, can we hire employees to assist with the unemployment office or some of the security, security concerns in downtown? So the very simple answer is, I think it's a really good idea to see if we can repurpose existing city employees to help with some of those issues. And I'm willing to kind of push that conversation forward. The more complicated answer would be is that local government is not unlike a local business, and we are going to suffer pretty significantly because of the downturn in the economy as well. So we, we will have the same, same issues to deal with as a local government that a, a business would, in that we will have no revenue coming in because of the, the economy. So, but I think in the, in the short term, looking at how we can purpose city employees to make sure people have access to unemployment is a, is a very, is a very good idea.
I think that's a conversation that the city, at least Councilman Knutson and I can talk to the director of Dieter and see how we could engage and maybe offer some support.
And then if I could, just before this caller gets off, if, since you referenced specifically, you're aware of other smaller cities, not at state levels, at legislatures, but cities that have done emergency actions regarding alcohol deliveries. I could ask that you would pass that on to us so that we can take a look at that as we're trying to address that piece of this conversation. That would be very, very helpful. My email is rsummerfield, R-S-U-M-M-E-R-F-I-E-L-D at lasvegasnevada.gov. If you can send me those references, I would be very happy to have my team take a look at that as soon as we can, so that we can continue those conversations in our office.
And you said that that would be in regards to the delivery of alcohol. What about the fact that Los Angeles put a six-month moratorium on commercial evictions? That day later, the city council extended it to a year. This was last week. Is that, who, is that, would that be forwarded to the same place? Because obviously, these-
Commercial evictions.
Commercial evictions.
I, I, I received a request from Legal Aid of Southern Nevada, which is very much engaged more so on the residential side. So I have a, a list of other cities that have done something similar, and I have requests into the city attorney's office to determine what our legal grounding would be from a city to do something similar to what Los Angeles has done, where we're structured a little bit different than Los Angeles. And so our statutory authority is not as broad as LA. But our city attorney's office is looking into what our authority would be.
Got it.
Okay, I'm going to jump in here. And I think we have a caller on the line. John Guidry is the CEO of Bank of Nevada. He would like to also make a comment on this issue. John, are you there? I know we had John. If you could unmute your phone? Okay, I guess we lost John. Sorry to interrupt the conversation there. It sounded like you were still, still wanting to chat. Go ahead, sorry.
I think that the councilman-
I think we, we have some action items from that, that last caller, so we'll follow up.
I didn't get that. Try- Sorry, that was Siri trying to speak out of turn.
Okay, John Guidry, I know you're on the line. If you can unmute your phone, your line is open. Okay, he just sent me a text. He's having technical difficulties. In the meantime, I've got another question around security and protection. Some folks are concerned about this. The question is, does the city recommend that business should board up their windows for extra protection? The person says wood costs a lot less than a broken window.
I'll let Ryan with our Department of EUD speak to that point, and then we need to, we can-
Yeah, hey, this is Ryan. I can answer that. So I kind of mentioned earlier that the RDA is reimbursing up to $2,000 to secure the exterior and facade of your business. So yeah, we recommend that. We don't want to see anybody's windows broken. So we plan to roll that out at the end of the week, and we'll have an application process that'll hopefully be as simple as possible, easy to fill out, and we'll get those monies out right away.
Okay, great. I know that John is calling back in. But in the meantime, another question is, is there any sort of financial, and we kind of touched on this earlier, but is there any sort of financial support for local nonprofits during this closure of nonessential businesses? And I know the FBA is making way to support some nonprofits as well. But anything on a local level that you guys are aware of?
I think I just noticed in the federal package that will go to, hopefully come out of Congress soon, that there, there's, I think, 50 million set aside for CDBG. And then there's another, there's another chunk of money set aside for HUD funding. And my guess is, is that as Nevada makes application for those funds, those are the funds that'll be set aside for, for some of the nonprofits in town. So outside of the SBA loans, which are totally appropriate right now, I imagine you'll see additional federal funding come out of the, the federal aid package that's, that's going through Congress right now.
Okay, the next question is around timing. Is there any discussion on whether the closure might last longer than 30 days, or how often is that closure being reevaluated?
That would be with the state of Nevada and the governor's health advisory task force that's advising the governor. And as they advise him and he makes decisions, then the city is responsive to the directives that he issues. Right now, we are not aware of any change in the course of his plans.
Okay, very good. Another question, when will we know what the details of the latest bill that passed in federal government, when will those be available? I know at the chamber, we've already gotten a lot of details. We have that posted on our website. But are you all privy to information there?
I would refer you to the Vegas Chamber. And I think in conjunction between the Government Affairs folks at each of the jurisdictions and the Vegas Chamber, that's where you're going to find the most up-to-date information. It's a, it's a, it's a lot of information that came out just early in the morning. So we're, we're all trying to figure out what it says.
And Mary Beth, I think that our federal delegation here in the state, probably our congressmen and women and our state senators are working hard to keep their websites updated with information or their offices current. So if there are specific questions they want to ask, I would totally direct them to the, you know, our congresspeople and our state, our federal senators. That I think they're the ones that are definitely more in the know about all the nuances to what is in this current package.
Okay. All right, very good. Yeah, the chamber has been working very closely with the Nevada delegation, and I know they have a lot of information. I think we have John Guidry back on the line, who was wanting to talk about the landlord tenant issue. John, are you there? John, did you unmute your phone?
I did. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Diaz and Councilman Newton. I just wanted to comment on the questions that came up regarding the landlord relationship and, and lease contracts. We've had this come up quite a bit at the bank. And the feedback we're getting from our in-house counsel, as well as from a lot of the tenants and landlords we've spoken to, is force majeure, which is likely not to, to cover the tenant in this situation. It's actually an act of government. And I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not going to give anybody advice on this. What we are doing is, is making recommendations to both landlords that we bank and tenants that we bank, business owners, that if you're finding that your current cash situation has put you in a position, you don't have cash, you need to pay, we're going to our business owners who are tenants to do a, a burn analysis or a cash position analysis and send it to the landlord with a request for, for payments to start at a later date, which anticipate you might be to up an operational and have sufficient cash flow. We're doing the same with landlords that are coming to us asking for deferred payments on their loans, is to tell them to get that information from their tenants, be able to demonstrate what the impact is, and then, and then we can. So from a banking perspective, since most landlords do have loans on their buildings, and they're wanting to make sure they can pay their loans, there's, I can't speak for all the banks, but I think the industry in general is trying with landlords, as long as they provide the necessary information to see what the impact is. So that's the best advice I can give you. If you're a tenant, provide the landlord that info along with your request. Landlords, check with your situation with the bank on their loan. That should make it a little bit easier for them to work with you. For the landlord or the tenants in the situation, I can just offer advice that I think could help mediate some of the issues that cause them not, a landlord not maybe to want to give you a reprieve if you're the tenant. And this hopefully will help them work out what they do with their bank and provide them a little bit of briefing. So I hope that helps.
Thank you, John, for that information. I think I echo Councilman Knutson's comments that we are looking at what we are legally able to do as a city. We are bound by our state statutes, and sometimes, you know, get to dictate or chart our course, different to the tune of what we're allowed to do. But know that we are making sure that the channel of communication between Legal Aid and ourselves is open, that we learn about issues that our community is facing. I know we've heard a lot more from the residential side of it, but commercial is also important, and making sure that our economy comes back stronger when we're all ready to activate it. So know that we are following up with our legal team as to what we can do, and, and we're trying to get it done expedient, as expeditiously as possible. But again, it just depends on what's on our books currently. And that's why I'm saying, I don't, I think that we do need to have a broader discussion with our legislators, our state legislators, our Attorney General's Office for the state and the governor's office. We all have to be knowledgeable of what's happening to people and so that we can act swiftly and quickly.
Well, thank you both so much, and thank you to your teams. Hopefully, you were able to get a lot of good information from this call today. And, you know, we've got a lot of folks asking about resources. And, you know, a, a lot of, a lot of people are just really hungry for information. But like I said, hopefully, you got a lot of information today. I would recommend that callers still on the call, go to our website, vegaschamber.com, as Councilman Knutson recommended earlier. And this, this webinar will be available after we get this call finished. We'll put that on our website as well, along with another call and other calls with the Small Business Administration. There's still questions around SBA and what those loans are offering and who can get those. So I encourage everybody to go to vegaschamber.com and listen to these calls if you missed anything. Feel free to, to reach out to the counselors. They gave their phone numbers out today. Councilwoman Olivia Diaz and Councilman Brian Knutson, we thank you so much for your time today. Thank you for caring about our communities and for agreeing to talk with all of us today. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Beth. We appreciate the chamber supporting us to have this, so that we're better informed as city council members that need to ensure that the safety and well-being of everyone is at the forefront of our jobs.
And Mary Beth, we'll send to you some answers to the questions that we weren't able to answer specifically around delivering alcohol, microloans, a website for local businesses, and obviously, the eviction conversation needs to be explored. And the response to that we'll send to you, so you can get it out to those on the call today.
Okay, excellent. Will do. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Stay safe and healthy.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you.